New Year's in Patchogue. And I think the thing for me that most satisfying out of all of it. You know, we've gone around and around about doing the fireworks and doing the ball rising. Where to do it, do it at the corner is midnight. My concern always doing about midnight is what you would end up with at midnight is a bunch of old people very tired and a bunch of 25-year-olds that would probably start partying two hours beforehand. But what I found was most satisfying, it was primarily families and young kids, carriages, and old guys like myself. So you had the kids and their parents, maybe their grandparents and just a lot of other residents. It was just very satisfying. And it really was, well, I think there was about 2,500 people.
Yeah, it was 2,200, that's the estimate from our security. We did a headcount.
When you get those kind of numbers, it's something that you never really advertise and you didn't really put out there. It really became a community event. And we're discussing possibilities of how to do it next year again. Just make sure we do it, we do it right. But it was, it was just, and I think the other part about it is, is I'm looking at the kids now. If you grew up around here, you went down to the Bay when you were kids and you saw the fireworks and they, Belleport had them, Patchogue had them, Bayport would have them, Sabre would have them, the whole bay would be lit up on the Fourth of July or whatever other holiday or if there was a carnival that they'd shoot at. They were just a constant kind of thing. Kids don't get to see it anymore. So there were all of these kids that were down there that really were having their first opportunity to be in the middle of it and they shot it right over your head. I mean, it was just very well done, very well organized. And I think they've, you know, with opportunities to do it again, it was, we have a fundraise going on. I think we can make it. But we're just gonna have to kind of figure out, you can't get 20, well, 2,000 people in that.
I think this is where we realize where our limits are.
So how do we still afford it down the street? But it was, it was well done. You know, the other thing too, just, just two minutes of, you know, over the last 10 years, we've spent, we've spent tremendous, tremendous amount of time on downtown. With a lot of focus on the downtown. It has really gotten to a point where I think that, you know, we've done many of the things and there's things left to be done. There's parking issues that have to be worked on. There are, you know, there's always that prospect of a hotel on the horizon and how do we make that happen? And we're making, hopefully we'll be able to make the hotel happen. And I, I know that because we were already in the process of looking at properties for expansion of parking and taking care of that issue. And we have the funding to be able to get rid of that issue now with the meters and not having to tax the resident for those, those issues that will be paid for by those that use it. This upcoming year and after, I think that it's really time to focus back on what Norman Electrickson said to me when I became mayor. Norman said to me in the back room in 1986, not before I became mayor, before I swore me as a trustee, back in 1986, he said, "As goes the downtown, goes the residential. And as goes the residential, goes the downtown. Lest you forget, either one of them, both of them will fail." And so I think we're really gonna take a hard look at those things that we need to do in the community over the next two years. Paying the streets is huge. And we've bonded a million, I think it's a million and two, is it around?
Yes.
A million and two for the streets that will happen over the next year or two. We have an opportunity for some funding for parks. Fortunately, it's not even built, is going out for RFP for a master plan for all of our parks. Nothing's been done in the parks since, I don't know, 1953 is when a softball field was put in, 19, in the mid-'70s is when we did Ryder Avenue Park.
Clemente Field was '81, right?
What's that?
Clemente Field, '81, man.
Clemente Field was '81, so it's, except for some, you know, a couple playgrounds that we were able to get some funding for, put in and a little, and the
The band shelf.
The band shelf replacement. The parks themselves, you know, we redid the pool, but there's more to it than that. And I think that we need to take care of it. We'd like to see a boardwalk along the dock there on the bulkhead, you know, some lighting, some additional lighting, a real walking path that's measured out so people can go down and either walk the doors or walk themselves, you know? So this year is, is gonna be about that, this two years. It's really beginning to come up with a, a real dynamic plan for all of our parks, including Belzak, which is up off Lakeland Avenue and Fort Worth Park or Central. And how do we improve this? How do we make them better? How do we make them so young families want to come to Patchogue and want to buy the, the homes and us gray-haired guys are gonna, because we want to sell? You know, how do you, because it is about that. And I've always said is I'd never want to live in a community that didn't have a little league. How do we take care of those fields so we can grow those programs? You know, one of the things that you, you heard Joe talk about all the time, from storefront to storefront, you know, sidewalks. We, we have the music festival, more than everybody do, they walk down the middle of Ryder Avenue. People get off the ferry and when they get down into Cedar Avenue, they gotta walk in the street because there's no sidewalks. So we're gonna take a lot, take a look at a lot of those things and a lot of those, those kind of things. Plus there are a series of other things that are on board to get done. But we're gonna transition ourselves to being Main Street centric and focused, to residential focus, taking, going back to where those of us that grew up in the village grew up and those who have moved into the village where they live, you know? Somebody once said to me, when you buy a house, before you look inside the house, stand out on the front steps and take a look across the street and down a block is where you want to be. Do you look out the windows or do you look inside the windows? So we want it so that all the neighborhoods and all, all the streets, people stand on their front steps and they like to get as close to you. And this means dealing with building and housing and stepping ourselves up there. We need to hire, we need to hire. But we have some opportunities that are gonna come up on the fiscal side of it that will allow us to do some things to really kind of improve the residential. But that's just a little look as we look down, look down the road. So we'll be looking for some help and for some ideas. We'll be talking with the community, we'll be taking most of the board. But as it goes along, we'll hear more and more about it. But the big thing is being to take care of those that live here, those that pay the taxes, those that drive out on the street and find a bottle. Hopefully we can get rid of most of them. Patrick Frydwell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there somebody here from Doc Spot Properties? No, we didn't, we were not sure if they were coming.
Yeah, I didn't hear from any bus.
That being said, their property at 128, 130 Medford Avenue, which people who have lived here in the village for a very long time know this as the former home of Fanna Miller's pharmacy.
Sort of house.
Okay?
Yeah, family. We're sort of by the character.
Yeah. And in fact, this is the doctor that I go to, so.
So you said, does anybody do that?
I do, yeah. In fact, I was, oh, I'm, hey, I
What patient?
No, I changed my doctor and this, she's great.
Yeah, my one year old.
Yeah, right? Who do you have, Elizabeth? Elizabeth, yeah, she's very nice. They're very good people there. And one of the women who works there, works there, lives right two doors from you.
Really?
Yes, of course. And they fixed up this building, it looks terrific. Really good. And again, you know, we, we like to, to recognize those people in the village and there seems to be more and more of them as, as we go along, people who fix up their homes or their businesses and care enough about this village to, to spend the money and to make the village a better place to live for everybody else. So congratulations to Doc Stop Properties. And Patty, you will make sure that they get this? Thank you.
David, I know there's a presentation by valet, you want to introduce?
Sure, I'll go first. See, the rest is up for the chamber to report at the proper time. But as everybody knows, this July, thanks to the support of the village, where we tried a pilot valet service program. This is a way to give patrons of Patchogue some options. You know, there were some concerns about parking meters and certainly there has been a huge influx of new people coming to our community, so if they would give valet parking a try. What we did after a little, quick little study of the area, our initial thought was to do it, use, utilize in the Terry Street parking lot, because it gave us nice access to the Bravo, the village municipal lot behind Bravo, which is usually doesn't utilize, particularly in the evening times. And while the idea was a good idea and certainly the, the feedback and the, the comments that we got was very positive that this option existed, the bottom line is the fact that the actual utilization was definitely very underutilized. You know, as you'll hear, it probably, since July, I think it was less than 100 cars that actually did valet their cars between July and, and the end of the year. And I guess what we discovered is that that's probably underutilized parking lot. I think what the valet service told us is that, and the reason why people were valeting there is that there was, that lot was never full. There was always spots available. And certainly from the chamber perspective, it's when I, people call about parking, I always recommend to go to that lot because it's probably the most unknown of the lots outside of the community. Because most people coming to Patchogue would either be coming from the west or from the north and they're gonna go to the first lots that they see, which would be, you know, Oak Street and, and the Church Street lots. So though, though those lots are certainly still very full and I think the valet service is something that still, there's a potential that it would still be needed. We just thought maybe refocusing, maybe changing the location to one of the lots that are more utilized. So right now, I think we're looking at the, the Oak Street lot. And we did have some conversations with the owners of the property just north of that lot, the Esposito Building, about us utilizing their parking, private parking field for valet service. So let me, without further ado, um
He has a presentation.
He has a presentation, all right. Okay. We're waiting for one person who's a little away, I don't know, do we have an ETA and how far away he is?
You could find a place to park.
Hey, you could find a place to park. Exactly.
Comedian.
Exactly. So I don't know if you want, maybe you want me to just go into some of the other stuff that I have for the report at the chamber while waiting?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that. Now, first, obviously what I was gonna talk about first, I'm just really piggybacking, you said it all, Your Honor. Midnight on Main Street was a tremendous success. It was a year of a lot of work and a lot of planning. And though it didn't go off exactly as we originally proposed, I think by the changes we actually stumbled across the best way to hold this event if we're gonna do this event again in the future. The nine o'clock time was embraced tremendously by the community. As the mayor alluded to, what we saw is definitely two types of crowds that came in. Crowds of families that wanted to have their children experience a New Year's Eve celebration without it being too late and they get to go home afterwards. And then a lot of young people who will use this opportunity as a way to begin their night in Patchogue. Certainly the restaurants and the bars, I think, had a, a much better year this year than they had in the past New Year's Eves, where I was always told it really wasn't a big night for many of them, New Year's Eve. This year, that's certainly changed. You know, I think next year and every year, the chamber will be adding as part of our requests, the request that we create the Patchogue time zone every 31st of December, the old PTZ, where nine o'clock is now midnight and really putting some truth in the fact that Patchogue truly is ahead of its time. So I just want to say thank you so much to the village and working with us. I think as we were getting closer, there was a lot of pressure and concern and, but there was patience and everybody working together and allowing us to find an alternative. So I thank you for that. Thanks for the co-enforcement, they were exemplary. Peter Sarich from the Build Department worked with the Fire Department, fireworks company Grucci. And the Department of Public Works were unbelievable that night. And thanks to all the men that came down to help us out that evening and make it work was, was a blessing. So just thank you. It was a great event and I hope this is gonna be something annual. It really was the first time, as that we're aware, that there was ever a ball type ceremony like that anywhere on Long Island. So I think we started a, a new annual tradition. Next, I do also want to highlight, we just found out Friday from the Long Island press that Alive After Five was voted Long Island's best event in their Best of Long Island. So we're very proud of that. I'm also gonna begin to list the, from what I've been told, there is over two dozen Patchogue related businesses that were not, were nominated that actually did win and will be congratulating all of them. But in particular, we're very proud that the Live After Five event was, is being honored as the Long Island's premier event for 2014.
I think David got it also.
I haven't got the whole word yet.
I didn't hear if they won yet.
Sports Space Gallery was
I didn't hear that, okay.
That's right. You had to give $5,000.
We didn't give them anything. I also, the next thing I want to talk about, as you're talking about some of the priorities for your upcoming year and the focus on the parks and the community is tremendous and is a huge one. From the chamber's perspective, we had a nice discussion at our executive board member, executive board. And we're really like, declared from our perspective, 2015, the year of retail. Reason being, though Patchogue, Main Street is thriving like we haven't seen in decades, one thing that's starting to be stagnant and is starting to lose a little juice is our retail establishment. So while the restaurants and bars are successful, they are starting to get crowded out, crowding out our retail. In particular, our president, Jacqueline Hensley, relayed a story this past holiday season where she went to visit our good old friends at Irish Crossroads over in Sabre and she was just amazed to see the lines in the retail stores out the doors. And where, when she came back to Patchogue that later that afternoon, it really didn't transcend the same for us. And certainly, Patchogue predominantly always was known as a shopping mecca for Suffolk County and we don't want to lose that, we want to try to recapture that. So I think it is time, you know, we're about due for, have one of our two, two and two meetings, the bid and, and the village. And we'd really like to make that next meeting just to focus about some incentives or some ideas that we can do to just encourage new entrepreneurs to move to Patchogue or start a business or some of those businesses out there to see if we can get a relocated location or move to Patchogue. And just provide that mix. I don't think anybody wants the village to be all one thing or all the other. We don't want all the old retail, we don't want to be all restaurants, we kind of want a mix. We want to create that reason to just want to come to Patchogue for the day and walk around. Hotel, obviously, would then lead to a tourist idea and cap, you know, the idea of a, a long weekend in Patchogue with the beaches and all. So, you know, that's just something from the chamber that we look to work with you this year and see what we can come up with as a way to both maintain the retail that's here as well as hopefully expand upon it. Now, I just want to get into some upcoming dates that we have coming. This Saturday, we have another grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony for the Yorkine Wax Center. Yeah. We know. We're dying for a, for a wax. Now, as you get older, certainly, you got, you got hair coming in places that never had it come before. I'm certainly a victim of that myself. Maybe I'll utilize that, utilize that. It's part of life and we welcome that, maybe there's a special I can utilize, I could certainly use. But it is this Saturday from 1:00 to 2:30. They're located at the Gateway Shopping Center, just a few doors down from Bob, Best Buy. So, you know, please come down, I'm sure we'd love to have the mayor there. You get a wax, I'll get one. I'll make a deal. Next, on our agenda that we have coming is that we're already starting to plan, you know, the Irish in Patchogue can't wait to get together and get St. Patrick's planning going. So we're in the midst of doing that. We did just have, since our last meeting, a very successful Irish Christmas party at Fulton's Gate, where we got to publicly announce Peter and Anne Marie Sarich is our grand marshal this year. It was a great selection, they've been involved from this event since the beginning and we're really excited about that. We're looking to do the parade on March 22nd. Now, I know we're still working as kind of a joint events calendar and hopefully the next meeting, get all our dates in place. But the St. Patrick's Committee, I don't know if we wanted to pull that date out and just get, so they could start advertising everything. You know, I'll leave that to trustee Hilton when he gets to his portion, if he'd like to do that. But hopefully, tentatively, we're looking at March 22nd for the parade and the passing of the sash would be the month, would be the, the month prior, which would be February 22nd, that Sunday, at the Brick House Brewery, we'll do the passing of the sash. Another, another meeting date I want everybody to know about is our general membership meeting. It's this coming Tuesday, the 27th of January. And we're doing a lunch meeting and we're gonna do it at Restigio's, one of our newer restaurant members. And our guest speaker is gonna be our new town councilman, Neil Foley, to kind of introduce himself to the community.
When is that?
Tuesday, January 27th, 1:00 p.m. at Restigio's. And we're still, we're still waiting, he's about five minutes away. The last thing, I just wanted to see if you want to have a discussion about, I know we're targeting next meeting really to approve all the dates for the incoming year. I've been pleasantly working with Bill and with Maria, with Marion and with Dennis Smith on this calendar committee to put these dates together. You know, obviously we're having these discussions internally with the chamber. I know some of the things we're looking to do is to try to do as best we can not to utilize closing Main Street as much as we do or certainly not to increase it. And if anyway, maybe find a few places that we can decrease because of the impact that closing Main Street does. And working on this calendar committee, the thing that, that came to me when we were going through everything, it's over 15 times we throw in the parades and other things that happen on Main Street, that Main Street gets closed. And there's not a community anywhere on Long Island that will close a major artery like Patchogue does and we're very grateful of your generosity in doing that for us. But certainly when events happen and they have a history to them, people kind of get tied to them and they hate to see that kind of change. One of our most important committees is the Chambers of Business Promotions Committee and they're concerned about, you know, the idea I think has been focusing on, the two dates, the July and August sidewalk sale days have always had events surrounding them, one Family Fun Night in July, all these nine in August. I know that from our perspective, work on this committee, we were talking about maybe combining them to one event, most likely being in August. I know the Business Promotions Committee is concerned about that. They did send a letter, I think that's what she did. So just, well, you know, ask the bill to just consider some of their thoughts as we go through the process. And certainly if anything I could do to facilitate a, a meeting of the minds and get together discussions further, you know, I'm certainly there to do that. But I don't know if anybody had any comment or anything to say, but although I just want to acknowledge that you did receive the letter and this we can keep in consideration. And now I'm waiting for our valet guy. I guess we, what I'll do is we'll, we'll let you guys go on and as soon as he gets here at the proper time, we'll be able to pull him up.
David, I've got one comment. We, I think we should congratulate and thank the Greater Patchogue Foundation Beautification Committee. We have six more benches that will be delivered in about eight weeks. So that brings like 13 benches from the good graces of the residents of our village.
All donations?
So it's all private donations to the, to the tax, you know, the tax deductible donations.
And we did put a call out to raise some more money for the Fire Department bench, thanks to the Economic Council of Suffolk. They came up with the, the final $1,200 that we needed so that, then now we can get a bench in the name of the Patchogue Fire Department. I know the theater is, is gonna do one in honor of the volunteers. The owners of the legitimate are gonna do something in honor of their father, who was the original owner of the building and
There's one going on the corner of Maiden, Ocean.
Right, exactly. So I thank Tom and Karen, you guys have really been the, the force behind the Memorial Bench Program, so you know, that serves
I write a few emails. That's all I do.
All right, so I see Michael Petrazelli from Parking Systems, I do have David Cohen here as well, they're gonna give a presentation about the, the valet service. But I also want, would be remiss if I didn't at least recognize the person who's really shepherding and carrying the ball for us on our parking issues. And that's our vice president, Don Turnbull, who's chairing that. So Don, I'm here as well to answer any questions for you too. So I'm gonna turn it over to you guys.
Thank you, Michael Petrazelli. I don't know, can I bring these up? I have a little diagram and
Yep.
So I'm not sure if you've been aware of, you let us operate for the past about six months in the village and we were working from the south side of Main Street and there and taking the cars down by the Bravo Lot, I guess you might call it. And with the chamber's gracious assistance and their support financially, we've been, we see the potential here, we see the traffic patterns and we're looking to relocate to the north side off of Oak Street, next to the, the western side of the theater for a drop-off area, which is a short pedestrian walkway to Main Street, right next to the theater. We see the theater has a, a large amount of business, especially on the weekends, that draws a desire and for all the shops, restaurants in town. And we're working with, through the chamber, with a lot across Oak Street, where we would take the cars so they wouldn't be in any municipal lots and taking space there, which is 30, building number 31, in the rear of that building. And I presented a diagram that shows some traffic pattern, how they would come in, how our valets would go out, take them across the street and then return them to the same spot. The red kind of star shape is the general area where we have the drop-off. It's out of the major traffic pattern. If you do come off of Oak Street, most people unless they're utilizing during the day, the fifteen minute spots right in the front, that are from out of the village, they make that right and continue down behind the theater and to the larger end of Oak Street to the eastern side of the theater. So we wouldn't be taking any space away that's being utilized now. My understanding, the lot that we'd be using is a private lot and we would be able to set you that up, supply them in insurance. And that business is graciously letting us use the lot and working as a good neighbor in the community.
How many spaces are in that lot?
The area that we're looking at is about 46, I think, if I count the, we're not gonna use everyone because some of them are at an angle that go into the municipal lot. So we would just use the private property and leave a few out on either end, not to hinder any traffic flow. So it kind of catches most of what we would use in the rear. The last few spots in the very top, middle right of the corner, we wouldn't utilize because that's where it comes, they kind of intersect at the end of the parking lot to the street.
Is 46 the number that you feel you can get in or?
No, 46 is the strike stalls, I believe. We could prob, we, usually with that area, if we come into a clean area and the weights are trying, we'll almost double it. We'll be able to block at least 80 cars at one time. Figuring turnover if the volume's there, I mean, we can do, you know, three shifts in a night in a typical restaurant setting. So I would think the same thing could be here if the traffic volume's there. What's the fee on the again? I'm sorry?
What's the fee for the valet?
The fee is on five dollars, which many of the establishments in town are reimbursing to people if they, you know, if they use it. So it ends up even if you're going to a muted spot, that they actually are saving money.
Yeah, we had met last week. Do you have any kind of letter or anything from the property owner there that's going to, that you guys are in negotiation or?
We've gone back and forth, I've supplied them with insurance and they've had a couple of emails. I didn't bring a copy of that tonight, but I, oh.
Yes.
I actually spoke to Bob Conklin earlier tonight, he said he was hanging out with me and calling you.
Oh, I didn't
Yeah. They, he gave it to Susan and she just wanted to change a couple of things, nothing major. But he said he was gonna call you to let you know that it was okay and
Maybe he'll give me a call tomorrow. But you just want to make sure that, you know, if we continue with this plan, that as we said the other day, that there's actually a group in place for you to use that.
And that can be a stipulation from the chamber or I think that's where you gave an actual consent to.
Yeah.
Now, you're gonna need a little booth there. We do have a booth now that we'd like to relocate to that side. We looked at, it's hard to tell on the map, but it is a, from the side of the theater where there is a sidewalk that has a handicap ramp and a few steps up, so we wouldn't want to put it there. We're looking right next to this, to the, next to the last spot, there's some boughs there, cement, metal boughs.
Okay.
And right there in the curb next to the drain, you thought that'd be a good spot. It's not in a, it's not in any fire zone area.
It's not in a fire zone, it's not blocking anybody's way
Not at all. There's like empty space, you can see that's right there. And if you're looking, right. It's right next to the, the last parking spot by the double yellow hour.
Yeah, yeah.
Right in that corner next to that
I know that spot, yeah. Hope that's probably a good place for
The people as they walk down, pedestrians would see it as they come up from the theater and they walk down. And it's also in a little alcove there, next up from the steps of the theater, that's where one of your unit meter, meters, right in that little alcove.
But the big thing is just to get us that documentation on
On the parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
So, yeah, a question. You know, on a, on a good theater night, when you have the restaurants going, the theater going, parking 80 cars, you could probably do that pretty simply. What happens when that lot gets full?
We then, we, I mean, we're still exploring other options of where we can put them. We then, I mean, we're still exploring other options of where we can put them.
Okay.
But at this point, that's, that's what we have to work with.
Okay.
Now, eighty cars at once, you can have a few that you bring in, a few that you bring out, so, you know, but for one show at the theater or one turn, that's about, that's right now. We'll, we find it that successful, we'll continue to explore it, and knock on other doors and ask other businesses that might not be using the lot at night. What were you averaging?
Was it chase?
We were not, in the spot that we were, we're not averaging very many cars. It was a rather quiet area. We've analyzed that quite a bit. It seemed that that lot was more people that are very familiar with the town, and because you have to go down the street, turn left, and turn into it again, and many times it was turnover, as they pull up, they'd see a spot open, can I take that spot? That might have changed in some areas as the meter's going. So that dynamic wasn't in play yet, which we're looking to that to be a whole new dynamic. If you could park, you know, three rows away, but you're still paying five dollars, and you have the opportunity where an establishment in the town is rebating that five dollars, now you just saved yourself.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that, Brian, you can clear this out, as far as if this lot gets full, they're not allowed to park valet on the street, correct?
Correct.
So we wanna make sure that people on Jane Avenue aren't...
Right. No, that's not our intention to be doing that. We will look for other avenues where we can put them in private lots, so that we're actually increasing where resident, you know, the parking in the town by having that, and come back to you and say, we've secured this lot, can we, we hope to use it.
If they could get a chase lot.
That's what I was saying, chase.
The chase lot probably has a hundred cars in it, right? And it's never full, ever.
Well, it's full when there's a theater shot.
And the benefit to the business, like, is that we're now increasing the space for them, but we're also securing the area. So where they have a liability when the lot's just open, we're taking that liability to our insurance carrier, because it's not a present for trip and falls, they're not, it's not an open lot. It's closed to valet, and there's less chance that someone's gonna park around their own and then have a recourse against those stops.
Anything else?
Thank you very much. Alright, thank you.
Request approved to set a public hearing to consider a dome chain for D5, D1 for property located through D4, forty-eight way of the avenue. That's on the corner of Mulberry, we have a shop down there. And D5, in fact, there's a spot somewhere before that, I think. D5 is for, for repair only. D1 is business property, and I understand that there's an insurance company that will be converting this shop into a... So it really isn't bringing into conformity with the rest of D1 uses within that area. The engine shop is leaving? Yeah. It's been a while, yeah. Before there was the motorcycle shop.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Bought my minibike there. Did you drive it home?
Nothing's a bit...
Next.
January twenty-sixth?
It's gonna have to, it has to start, probably has to start the publication or posting or anything like that, it's gonna take some time.
It's coming tomorrow.
It is going, okay. So do you have enough time?
Uh, yeah.
Can you change this up?
Are we doing the whole, okay, I can tap it between...
First, let's maybe, you have to work?
I worry night.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Fifth.
Request approved for N R L A realty, property located at 426 East Main Street, which is outside of the contact H2N, central food court, from out of district, out of village, out of district sewer, by H2N. This is on the new, the sewer extension into East Patchogue.
I don't know what that...
This is currently, this is the relocated spot of the Patrick prison.
Oh, okay. Let's start to pick itself up now. So, just approved for them to contact H2N.
Motion.
Second.
First approved to set a public hearing to amend section four thirty-five dash twenty-two C of the Village Code to provide an exception for non-happable space and door basement space when calculating the off-street parking credit. Brian, one?
This is, we can set this for the next, the next board meeting. This is a, we have the pile-out program, which has been replacing Patrick for a while.
David, rule of taxes.
Correct. David, a little parking space, so we can pay the, uh, the owners of that are parking to a certain extent in D3, it was a fundamental change for our zoning area, where D3 did not require previously parking spaces, and now you do. Except for retail, which is good that David brought that up about retail, retail remains neutral, plus neutral, is an incentive to encourage retail in downtown. Retail has an enhanced thing. However, if you're gonna change the use or expand your footprint to include, let's say, a restaurant or something like that, you're gonna have, you have to pay for that, for the impact in the parking, because within the D3, property owners can't often provide the parking on their, on their parcel. The concern from the building department was that conversion of non-happable space, for instance basements, or those kinds of things, should not count in the addition to the retail, to the, to the non-retail credit. That's what that changes.
An example of that is, you know, yesterday's has a basement that can be used, because it's got a wood, almost nine-foot ceilings, and it has two access elevators. Probably go next door, whether it's standings or any of the other spaces.
From J's building, do you use that basement?
It's a, it's a single way in, it's a low ceiling, you know...
Or attic space, attic space, basement space, could be counted in the gross square footage of the building, should not normally be counted as to, to, to come towards what your mountain would be.
Because they don't have a roof and ceiling.
Correct, exactly.
Black and blue ceiling as well.
Exactly.
Okay, so focus it. You didn't miss me?
That's my shift, no, sir.
Yes.
Second.
Third.
And a Smith calling six. And fifty minutes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, happy new year to everybody, and my colleagues here on the board, and everybody out there. What can you say about the Patchogue Theater this weekend? Mr. Mayor, you were there, Mark, you were there.
Yeah.
It was jam-packed, probably about twelve hundred people on maybe one of the coldest nights of the year.
Yeah.
And we were walking down Main Street prior to the show, it was packed, when the show was over, people were all over Main Street, and Dave Mason's show was, we're bringing in a performer who had his legendary, and Mark, what was your thought about the show?
It was great, rapid, yeah, in traffic.
Yeah, it was terrific, a great show.
Yeah, it was fabulous.
Yeah, and, you know, the theater just did just a great job, and, you know, it's just, you know, a good way to kick off the season with a sold-out show.
What kind of show would you need to get?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, the people who went to the show thanked me very much, and thanked the people at the theater for organizing that show, and, you know, there's a lot of people behind the scenes who did a lot of work for that show too. So I'm gonna take out my trusty iPhone, just give everybody a little bit of an idea of what's coming up at the theater, which I haven't done in a little while, but we got some really good things coming. And it might be a little out of order, but on April twenty-fifth, you know who's returning to the theater? Ronan Tyden. So it's gonna be Ronan Tyden's show in April. This one is being put on by the theater and not the Greater Patchogue Foundation. This is the news, the theater's putting the show on. On January twenty-eighth, Starshine, this is Sue Berner's program that she, she does, and it highlights, it's like the Patchogue, what is the show on TV? Ah, Patchogue Idol, similar to that. We have very talented people here around the village, Long Island, and every year it gets bigger and bigger, and it's a lot of fun, because you see some local people who are doing great. On March eighth, we've got a great show, A Bronx Tale, starring Chaz Palminteri. If you're familiar with his Bronx Tale, it's a one-man show, it's fabulous, Chaz Palminteri.
Kind of finish, Jack?
I mean, it's a downside. I think that might, I think that's a, um, it's a nice Columbus show, nice Columbus show. And Buckweed Zytico is coming. Where'd it go now? Where'd you go, Buckweed? Alright, so March fourteenth, the great Buckweed Zytico, if you like zytico music, but that's Nollans, this is a great show for everybody.
It's cool, why not?
That is March fourteenth.
Attractive music.
I have nothing to do, Joe.
For all the lurrat.
March twenty-first, it's My Sinatra, which is another good performer, and we've got live, a lot of great Live in the Lobby shows coming. And on March seventh, we've got the Sixth Patchogue Folk Festival with real folklies, Tom Paxton and Janice Ian.
Wow.
They're Grammy Award winners, both. So, yeah. What's that? No, there's still, there's still a hot act. No, 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 BB King here. And then we have Coming to the, Coming to the Laughter in the Lobby on, number of Thursdays on January fifteenth, February thirteenth, look, go to the website, and some recently added events. Let's Swing, the Artie Shaw Orchestra. I mean, if you have not seen either the Glenn Miller Orchestra or the Artie Shaw Orchestra at the Patchogue Theater, you are missing something very special.
What is that?
That is on May third, at three o'clock, it's a Sunday afternoon bill, so you can do that. Have a cup of coffee before you come.
It's usually my back.
But if you have not, if you have never seen a big band, a swing band, in person, live, when you see them, you just, it'll knock you right out of your seat. We got The Crystals coming up, March twenty-ninth. Here's a great one, the great Patty Lupone, will be doing a one-woman show here at, at the theater on April eighteenth. And then The Pops in Patchogue is coming, and our favorite man is coming back to the theater, Dominic Chienezi. Yes, on April eleventh. Another great show. So there's so much good stuff happening at the Patchogue Theater, and I gotta tell you, the start of the season with a, with a sold-out show is really big for us, so...
And Girls with Guitars?
And then all that, well, I forgot my friends in the country music business. We've got Girls with Guitars, what is that? Girls with Guitars, Thursday, February fifth, that's a JVC Broadcasting with Country ninety-six point one. Is that? Yeah, I'm sure it's sold out, yeah, they sell out pretty quick. So we got that one. Then, of course, Mickey B's Winter Spectacular, February seventh. Oh, what a great lineup. Larry Chance and the Earls, and, oh boy, oh boy, it was perfect. So February seventh, and that's another sold-out show, that'll be sold out. And Ovations Dance Repertory Company presents Willy Wonka Junior for the kids. Are we in Willy Wonka Junior?
No, there was no Wicked Roll, so I...
No. I'm not in it, and Mary's not in it, we're taking a hiatus, we don't wanna get too saturated out there. Willy Wonka, that's February twenty-second, that's great for the kids, it's Orlando painting with ovations. And we got that, and we got that. So that's what's coming up at the theater for the next couple of months, so go to the box office or go to the website and see what's going on there. And a little more theater news. We've, this week, on Wednesday, the Patchogue Theater voted, the board voted, to extend an additional one-dollar fee on each ticket to the village. Now, this, this one-dollar fee goes into a capital reserve fund that will be for, specifically for theater improvements and things like that. You know, the building in another nine years or so, the building's gonna be one hundred years old, and I would say that you have to start thinking about what has to be done to a building that's a hundred years old. So we figure that with, with the numbers of the people that come to the, to the theater, I mean, you're talking over a hundred thousand dollars, they sell that many tickets, so we'll, so that'll be for different things that are going on, theaters, different kind of improvements, you wanna add something? Oh, I'm just saying, we have seats that are going in next January, if you've noticed, some of the woodwork has started to, it's got a great tint to it, they had put a fire retardant on it, and it infected it, ceiling tiles from the leaking roofs that need to be replaced in the main house. Carpeting. Carpeting. It's just, it's our building. The, the theater itself carries its own day-to-day expenses. They pay for their electric, their gas, stamping, minor repairs, plumbing, and stuff like that. It's our building, and it's our responsibility to make sure that our property's staying in the manner that we want it to be. It also guarantees the sustainability of the, of the theater also. As administrations change and groups come in, and the economy changes, one thing that we don't wanna do is have the theater become the victim of an economic downturn. And the way you do that is you create the capital reserve, make sure that we can take care of those things in the theater, that you can take care of weekly, daily, yearly basis, and to put money back into the theater. The biggest mistake government makes is it forgets about its infrastructure, and they let that be the last thing that happens. We get that sixty-five percent of the bridges in New York State are in failing condition. My goal is to make sure that we both financially budget ourselves, but things such as that, and the same thing with the parking meter funds, exactly the same thing, that goes into a capital, all those, doesn't quarters and dollars and five- dollar bills, that comes into a capital reserve to make sure that we have the funding to continue to upgrade and improve the parking. So it's just part of a, a financial management plan, that the treasurer, the deputy treasurer put in place, to everybody else. You can't dip into it just not with the general fund. Well, you know, we're planning on putting new seats in the theater, and I would say by the end of, the beginning of next year, January. January of next year. It'll be called... But just to explain a little bit, it's not just putting the seats in. There's a very good chance, and we, we don't know this for sure, we have engineers come in, that there's gonna have to be, we're gonna have to put in a new, a complete new floor in the, in the seating area, because the seats need a certain amount of subfloor, an inch and a half of subfloor. We're not sure if the current floor, we know for sure that there are some spots on the current, current floor that are soft, that, that need to be repaired, but to put these seats on, on a less than adequate subfloor is not good for them. So it adds more cost to, to it, but it's just a capital improvement that we really have to do, and it's something that we don't wanna have to do in five years from now after we put the seats down. So it's all gonna come up, it's gonna be a new resilient floor, floor tiles or carpeting they're gonna put on, on the floor. It's warranty standards. And, and it's warranty standard, so if the seats go in, they go in on this new floor, or we got a great warranty from the manufacturer of the seats. So by, by next January, they'll, they'll be in. There's a sample of the seat in the lobby of the Patchogue Theater. If you've been to the theater, I think the, the seats currently are sixteen inches. They're currently eighteen, and we're going to twenty-one. They're, they're eighteen inches, we're going to a larger size, which is a twenty-one inch seat. Interestingly enough, if you go to the large seat, we will not lose our seating the way they're reconfiguring. Yeah, plus we're... Some of you will be looking at the back of the theater with a mirror in your hand. But we're also going to be redoing our handicap area, but as, as the mayor said, we're not gonna be losing any, any seats because of the way the configuration of the seats and, and the array that they work on. From what I'm told, that the way the seats are set up now, it's not, it's not a good use of space. So we're gonna be doing that, and that's theater news. Now, parking, today is the first day of parking meters in the parking lots, and Mark, I'm sure people have been coming into your place and asking about them.
Yes.
Alright. And right now, for the month of February, we're gonna be giving out warnings. End of January. End of January, till, throughout January, we're gonna be giving out warnings like we did last year. If you have a business in the village, please make sure that your customers are aware of the parking meters, and, you know, Mark, you're great about it, you're very, you're very customer-friendly about it. Again, this money is going into a specific... Um, again, this money is going into a specific fund, and, uh, hopefully we'll have some good news to report about, uh, properties and things like that, 'cause, to, to build more parking spaces. But we're gonna be making change. One of the changes we're gonna make is I've gotten a lot of calls from the Patchogue Library that, uh, they have handicap people, you know, come to the library, they're there in the evening. So we're gonna make those handicap spaces at the library, Joe.
You'll get on, yes, you're gonna get this down, I think, yeah?
But all, all the parking, all the parking lot handicap spaces don't start till nine PM. Okay? So, the people who come to the Village in the evening, you know, if they're a handicap, you know, one of the things that, and, uh, I get this question a lot, shouldn't handicap get free parking spaces? You know, uh, we all go into the Village, and if every person who got out of a car with a handicap tag was, couldn't maneuver to a space, then it would be one thing. Um, but a great number of people who have handicap tags in their car are quite capable of walking to a parking meter.
Jack, can I actually speak to that?
Yes.
Because, um, we, in our office, looked into it last year when we first did the first one. It's not even a village, it's a state, the M V state law, that the only people that are exempt that have handicap, and we have special records in my office, are people that physically cannot use their hands to manipulate the meter, and they have to be the driver, so they'd have to have one of those modified cars. So there's very few people, and I, and I've dealt with it all year, too, people saying, well, I don't have to pay helluva mistresses, but it's, this is, this is the state, it's not. So we followed their model.
So to be more accommodating, we are not gonna start the meters on the handicap spaces till, uh, nine o'clock. On the street is a different story. On the street, we, we continue.
So only in the lots?
Only in the lots, yeah. So David, if, if anybody asks you, that's, you know, so here's day one of our, and I've always said that this is a fluid process and that we're gonna work with, uh, different groups, you know, when they have requests and, you know, and consider things. Uh, on day one, we're already making a, a, a change. So, you know, gotta help you. So Joe, you'll, uh...
Yeah, we'll put a wet sign, fine.
Yeah, just, it's a small sign, you know, it says, you know, just like we have, we normally have. So, um, again, uh, today was day one. We'll, uh, we'll see how it goes over the next few weeks, and, and I get emails, I haven't gotten any emails today with, with any complaints or, or comments, but as those come in, I respond to them, and, uh, if you know somebody who's got a, a problem, they email parkingmeter@patchovillage.org, and I respond to every request. Oh, the, of course, the parking, the Village parking permits, uh, for Village residents. Have we had a lot of people?
Oh, the first two weeks of January, we have six hundred and thirty residents have already gone.
Six hundred and thirty residents have already come. So, uh, hopefully all residents will. Anybody here a resident who does not have a parking sticker?
Does the train, does the train sticker work, say?
Josephine.
Train, you have a train sticker?
Yes. That, that also works, yeah. No? Um, so, um, you know, make sure you get your parking sticker. So that is the theater and parking. And, uh, Mark, how is it working back there with the no parking till nine-thirty? Are we finding a lot of people not listening to that?
Uh, no, I think a lot of people are listening to it.
Okay, okay. Uh, it's very important that, uh, that if, if you have a business in the Village or in the Village, and you see that people are parking in those nine-thirty, to call, uh, Village Hall and let them know, and they'll send a, a car over there to...
Dispatch.
It's called dispatch. What's the number, twelve?
One-twenty-five.
Yeah, um, four-seven-five, twelve-twenty-five, right? Yeah. And that'll get, uh, a car over there to, to at least give somebody a warning. You know, we don't wanna throw tickets at everybody this week, but, uh, we wanna make sure that people are obeying all the, all the rules in the parking lots. I request approval to set a public hearing dedicating certain real property lying between Lake Street and Havens Avenue as a Village Street, so that Havens Avenue is extended north and connected with Lake Street. That's going through, uh, New Village, which was always the intention there, so, uh...
When the public hear, when the, when the approvals went through?
Correct, yeah, exactly. We will go through all that, that's, it has to be by, by Village law, you have to have a, a public hearing to the rededication, the adjustment of the street lines.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Second, six?
Did we vote on it?
Yeah.
Does that include the entrance all of South Ocean into the parking lot?
You know, we should do that. Because then if we have a do opening, we'll have that opportunity, but if we're not going to open it, it's a point of denial.
Yeah.
That's not a street, right?
Uh, I'll have to, I'll have to review that, that, you know, that wasn't included in the original. This is only Havens Avenue.
Okay.
That, that would later be a dedication to us, uh, because we didn't own that originally, because that was right in the middle of Sneezy's. That was, that was in the voice-up department, I think.
So does it, does this mean that once we, uh, go through this process, we're gonna open that street?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Request approval authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Patchogue Medford Library for the placing of a parking pay station on library property. Thanks to the Patchogue Library, we worked out a deal, Attorney Egan helped us out, and, uh, we needed that space to put our parking meter on, and, uh...
Yeah, we traded them a building for the space.
But, uh, yeah, so that parking meter is now in that space. So, uh, that's a motion?
Motion. Second.
All favorit?
Aye.
Okay. Request approval authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Morewood Oaks Management Associates, L S, LLC, to provide utility coverage to the Village by service providers.
Well, that is, we'll have audited our franchise agreements with Cablevision with, um, Leifler or P S and G, because with Cablevision, we get a, as, there's, within that first franchise agreement, we get a payment for all of the, the u, from all of the users. So this is, to get that audited, to make sure that, what they said they're gonna give us, stick it in us.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. A motion. All favorit?
Aye.
Oh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow board members, ladies and gentlemen. A happy new year to everybody. I trust everybody had an enjoyable holiday season. I have made a resolution this year is to speak slower and clearer, to not mumble, not talk fast. I'm told that I tend to do that.
The meetings go longer than it's go fast.
I, but let's face it, I mean, my reports are the highlight of the meetings. People come to hear my reports, so they have actually talked clearly and let them hear them clearly. Um, so I'm going to try to do that. And, Mr. Mayor, um, along with Trustee Hilton and Trustee Furb, I officially welcome you into the Grandpa's Club. Congratulations.
Yes, it's nice.
It is, uh, a joy that is beyond description. You'll have to enjoy it. Best to you, Mary and Dave, and the door.
Just waiting till college.
Couple little things I, uh, wanna talk briefly about, a few committees that we actually started, um, towards the end of last year, but through the holiday season, stuff couldn't do too much. The first is, um, our Tulip Committee. And the Tulip Committee is designed to unify the look in Patchogue. Tulip. What we're looking to do is...
Killing me, Keith.
What we're looking, what we're looking to do is, you know, we have like green planters and a different color garbage pail, and brown benches and black benches, and, and different style lights and stuff on Main Street. So we want, when you went to the Village from the east end and the west end, that sense of place, we want you to know you're entering Patchogue Village. So little by little, we wanna unify that whole look on Main Street to give Patchogue its own look. It's, it's not gonna happen overnight, you know, as we replace the planters, we'll replace them with a black one. We're all gonna try to, talking too fast, aren't we? We're all gonna try to paint them. Um, so...
Did you talk to Paula Murphy?
Actually, Paula Murphy and Karen Murphy, uh, Karen and Furb, they're co-chairs. You know, Paula and Karen are the co-chairs of the committee, but they don't know it yet, though, so Paula maybe, maybe you might wanna let Karen know.
Well, because they follow, they've been thinking...
Yeah, no, they've, yes, they've...
The future of changing out a lot.
They've been at the meetings, yeah, they've been involved in the meetings, like I said. You know, they're, they're gonna co-chair, so I should've mentioned that, thank you. But anyways, the goal is to unify the look in Patchogue. The second committee, which formed and has, um, had our first meeting today, I like to call it a pep rally, is our pep committee, and that is to protect the environment in Patchogue. Um, we talked a little while ago about the possibility of legislating a reduction or banning the use of plastic bags, single-use bags, in the Village. Um, we've been gathering some information over the last few weeks. Clerk Seal was our, our chairperson for all of about ten minutes today, and then relinquished that.
Oh, I don't think she took that.
Oh, she didn't tell, okay, all right, so Clerk Seal is still our chairperson. Um, there, uh, I, I, you know, I have some information, as you know, the Village of Southampton has done that, and, and East Hampton, and, um, quite a few places, actually, and, and there is some very interesting information. Uh, we met this afternoon in Fenomena, again later in the week, uh, and, and I think this is something that's gonna get rolling. Hopefully, um, I'll be able by next meeting to announce the date of a public forum, so we get a lot of public input, and, uh, we'll see what happens from there. Also, okay...
Joe, I, I think Fairway Market has biodegradable plastic bags.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's, there's, there's products out there.
But there's cons to that as well.
I'm sorry?
There's, there's cons to biodegradable plastic, so they just break into...
Oh, yeah, there's, like, we've got a lot of that information that the, that the committee's been saying, and I, and I've talked to, by the way, I have had informal conversations with, um, a manager of Seven-Eleven, Cow Palace, some of the stores who use these single-use bags, and, uh, you know, they're, they're kinda on board with it, actually, to be honest with you. Uh, it may come to where they sell a bag, a reusable bag, uh, like I said, this will all come out, this is what the committee's for, to determine the best way to go about that. Uh, tonight, Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting approval to hire Enso Corporation to provide maintenance of the membrane thickness system at the wastewater treatment plant for three, three-year period at a cost of five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. Um, the membrane thickness, there are these plates that, the purpose is to squeeze the solid, and so you separate the solid from the waste so that you're not picking up, up from the water, rather, I rather, so you're not, you know, not picking up water, but, clean just sludge and, and waste just to do with water. Um, these plates over time became worn, and so they were uneven, you know, we didn't know that when we first opened the plant, we kinda learned it as you go along. Um, so we found this company who will provide the maintenance for them and ensure, either replace the plates, maintain the plates, and ensure that we don't run into that kind of issue again. Um, so that is my motion.
Second. All favorit?
Aye.
I'm requesting approval to hire Ed Cork and Sons to remove and repair the short-front park drainage outlet at a cost not to exceed forty-three hundred dollars. These are the two culverts down at, um, Little Creek, uh, which somehow rose out of the ground, it broke, deteriorating, and so, uh, Ed Cork will remove and repair those at that cost. That is a motion.
Second. All favorit?
Aye. Requesting approval to declare one, Bradco MB twelve skid steer attachment, two, Western eight-foot unit on snowplows, and one, it's all basic, and one, and one international twenty-four forty-four tractor as excess and be disposed of. Motion.
Second. All favorit?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I believe that's all I have.
Trustee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, congratulations and good luck on the birth of your franchise. Very nice, exciting.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year to all.
Good way to start the year.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that's great. I have a request to, um, accept the resignation of Public Safety Officer Robert Weber immediately. Um, he is moving on to, uh, another tier in his life, and he's starting with the MTA, so, uh, will need to, uh, have time to, uh, work his new full-time job. So, um, it's with regrets, he's been a great asset for the, uh, Village for the last six years, and, uh, it's with regrets we have to let him go, but today he got himself a nice new job, and, uh, good luck to him. So, uh, that's a motion to accept his resignation.
Second.
On the other side of that, I request to hire Christian Wagner as a public safety officer. Um, his position and his starting salary will be sixteen dollars and forty cents, so that's a motion.
Second.
And last but not least, um, Bob Wallbauer is, um, a retired police officer. Um, he works with the Building and Housing Department. Very, very good job he does. Peter's always talking about him, always says what, uh, very professional, good his job, you know, he doesn't let anything get by, and, uh, and he's very fair with, uh, you know, what he does. So, um, Peter's looking to, um, have his, uh, wages increased, um, from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars immediately, and on completion of his, um, certification for code enforcement technician, um, that will be in May, which will be another two-dollar increase. So, um, that's a motion to, uh, accept that.
Yeah, when, when Peter, Sarah spoke to me about it, it's the person they use to do investigations, to go into homes, there's, there's many of the more difficult tasks, while some of the Peter leans on extensively, so this is a, this will deserve.
A motion?
Second.
All favorit? Aye.
And that's all I have for today, thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, residents, and guests. Uh, first of all, I, I wanna just point out that the, uh, the property on West Avenue that we demolished is now for sale. So there's the vacant lot, it's all cleaned up. Uh, it's the bank, I guess, went through whatever foreclosure process they had to go through, which we were anticipating was gonna take years, only took months, and if you got eighty-five thousand dollars, you can buy a vacant lot on West Avenue.
It's probably, what'd you say?
It's pretty big. I, I think it's sixty by two-hundred, and maybe it's not quite two-hundred, but it's a big, it's a really nice big lot, so. You know, we have had some new houses built in Patchogue, so I guess we'll get a new house on that, hopefully pretty quickly. Um, I don't have a C D A report, the, the last C N D A meeting was the last, there was supposed to be one last week, but we didn't have it. Uh, and I got a couple of, uh, quick things. Uh, request a move, uh, approval for the Long Island Growers Market to hold the annual farmers' market on Fridays from July through November in the municipal parking lot located on East Main Street and Ryder Avenue. That's a motion.
Second.
Uh, request approval to release the road improvement performance bond in the amount of one, uh, million, seven hundred and eighty thousand and fifty dollars for certain roadway, sidewalks, and other improvements made to areas in and around the Village of Patch, Patchogue by One West Main Street Apartment Investors LLC. That's a motion.
Just so you know, that, we had an engineering company come in, take a look at all the work that was done by Tri-Tech, the Tri-Tech project, to make sure they were conformity with the submitted plans, being conformity with, uh, Village Code and with New York State. So, it's, they, they passed the test. We get their money back.
Now, but the, what's up with the Oak Street? Is that's not gonna...
Don't put them through there?
Yeah.
We can, we can. I, I always, I have a concern about it. I can see somebody coming down the block, seeing the lights start to turn, and decide they wanna make it into the parking lot, as some, somebody's walking with a baby carriage through there. So just, we'll, we'll make a decision, uh, as to what we do with it, but this, this releases it with the construction pieces out. This was a construction one. So that, for a motion, second?
Second.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Proceed.
Good evening, everybody. I just have a couple of, uh, a couple of things to report on the, um, I'm gonna read from my phone as well. On the art front in Patchogue, one second, let me know what's hap, happening at Patchogue Arts Council. There's a new show called Beyond Painting curated by John Cena. Uh, these are pieces that I believe hang on the wall but are probably multimedia, three-dimensional in some respect. Uh, various artists, and there is a reception this Saturday, uh, January seventeenth, from five to seven PM. It was a very nice reception with, uh, cheese and beverages and little snacks and...
Send me one of those invite things.
Oh, sure.
Send it to everybody, Lori.
I will, and I will not be there because I'm going to visit my daughter, so if you guys...
Well, I should send it to me up on the...
Okay.
With your skis?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only winter for a short time.
Right.
It'll be spring before you know it, it'll be all over. And then the Patchogue Arts Council also maintains two satellite galleries in the village, one is at Roast Coffee and Tea, and the show was just, I believe, changed out. The new show is Caitlin Shea is the name of the artist, she's quite a talented young woman, representational style, but very kind of loose and breezy with the media. There is a reception on January 25th, I will be able to make that one, from 2 to 4 p.m. of that artist, and then in the lobby gallery, currently on view is a painter named Margaret Minardi, so look for those exhibits, and the lobby gallery is open whenever theater is open, so walk in and see, see the work, there is not a reception for that show. For those of you that like film, Plaza Mac has just finished up a very successful run of the movie Birdman, I think it was probably one of the most successful movies that they showed.
Something on it.
They just won a Golden Globe, yeah, it was quite good, but they had a very, very good turnout, I think it ran for three weeks, which is long for them.
Yeah.
And so they just started showing this week Big Eyes, which also was mentioned in the Golden Globes, Amy Adams, and it's about a woman, you know, the woman who did the paintings with the Big Eyes, if you remember those from the 60s, I don't know much more about it, but that's, you can find it on their website, that's what's currently playing. Then the only other thing I wanted to mention, because we've talked about signage pollution and we've talked about, we've talked about sandwich boards, we haven't really come to any conclusions, but there was a recent lawsuit with the town of Brookhaven, and I think they prevailed.
For the real...
They prevailed in their battle against sign pollution, but then today I learned that there's a case before the Supreme Court right now about how a small village has defined the types of signage, and they define things differently for a political party than, say, for a church or for other, and we have similar things in our courts, from what I was hearing, so, and we just got a small gist of it, so I think what we should do is wait to see what the Supreme Court has to say before we propose any legislation, because I'd still like to tackle the issue, so I'm going to be curious to see how this turns out.
Chief Justice Roberts will do us the sandwich for that.
Chief Justice Roberts, it was very, from what I heard, he was a little perplexed with some of the comments he made, but I was fascinated that that made it all the way to the Supreme Court, apparently the case was brought by a church, and he was upset, the pastor was upset that his signage was treated differently than political signage, and that's how, that's how it got started, so it was a free speech, basically, free speech issue. I have nothing else to report tonight, thank you.
Just real quick, David, just so you know, we've been scooping up signs that are left overnight, so anybody calls.
I need to get a message from Jody, and we've already casted out that, you know, if your sign is left overnight, you leave the possibility that it's going to be confiscated, so, you know.
Same signs?
Yeah.
They should have been on.
There was, there was a whole ramp up in one night, straps, trees, and poles, and fire hydrants.
And I'm going to get to when they even start banging around.
Those are two doing, they're both others.
You're supposed to bring them in, not supposed to bring them out.
Christie Hill, how do you say?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, colleagues, guests. First of all, I just have to make a personal comment about something that's being a resident of the village, and that is that this January 1st, there were a lot of thank yous from various organizations, businesses, clubs, for the people who helped them throughout the year. Rarely, if ever, I saw the village seal, and this to me is very important, because behind every opening, behind every road closure, behind every music festival, is the village, and the residents pay for the village, and yet rarely, I said, the village is thanked, and this year, it was everywhere, and I ranted and raved about it, so I'm ranting and raving to you. If you're creating something, if you're making a sign, a poster, thank the village, put the village seal on, thank the residents, thank the, I hate to use the word taxpayers, but thank the taxpayers for supporting you and the village. That's it, I'm done. Okay, I'd like to request approval to reserve the dates for the Great South Bay Music Festival, Friday, July 17th, Saturday, July 18th, and Sunday, July 19th. The full event will be approved pending site plan approval by the senior building inspector. That's a motion just for the date.
And the pending...
Right.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to request approval to hold 15th Annual World Tai Chi in Kyung Day on Saturday, April 25th, at Shorefront Park from 9 to noon. I don't know if a lot of you have participated in this, but it's, I believe it's, it's got to be like its 15th year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 15th year, it's a great program, it's free, and it's one of those small things that are done in the park that are very big to a few amount of people, and a lot of people should participate. That's a motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request approval to hold annual Tai Chi in the park at Shorefront Park on Saturdays in June and on Saturdays in August from 9 to 11 a.m. It's a motion?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And, Mr. Mayor, this is a continuation of the discussion that you had earlier as far as the some of the changes and promotion, things that we want to do to promote the park, Brian, you want to touch on that as far as?
No.
Okay, okay.
Round park.
I'd like, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request a go-out for an RFP for the development of a master plan for the village park system, Shorefront, Ryer Park, Walbauer Park, Four Sisters, Belzak, and Father Tatora parks, as well as the municipal pool, 380 Bay Avenue Recreation Center, and including the identification of future parklands, identification of future parklands. This is, it's, it's going to be a master plan that we will have to have in front of us to be able to identify where we would want to improve, what we, you know, want to expand, and it's something that we've been looking for a while, we have portions of it, but this will be just in one spot. That's a motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I don't know if I'm trumping you, request approval for the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
No, I'm only there.
Okay, so we're good, or?
We're going to have a...
Oh, okay. St. Patrick's Day Parade and 5K, March 22nd, the 5K is at 10:55, and the parade is at 11. That's a motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other comments by the board? Public speaker? Mr. Siegel. Dad's coming back when?
He's coming back in March, he's going for another cataract upgrade.
Oh, really?
Wednesday, Thursday, so hopefully goes through. Mark Siegel from Blums, the old sign on the front, Wednesday morning will be going up on the roof.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
That will be done. Another thing is, Devlin and I were standing in the front store, and I said, did you see this, see anything funny, I mean, look out the front window, because we never saw anything when we had that board up, though. Well, the people across the street have this neon sign that goes, "Lynx," I thought the people weren't supposed to have these neon signs in the village. Jeans Town.
Jeans Town.
It gets, it gets, it gets big. Scroll big.
Scrolling sign?
Yeah, yeah, blinking, it's annoying, you know, and another thing, one more thing.
You look out the window too much.
I know, but I like looking, I just watch people go bombing or come in, you know, and I don't always see anyone looking outside, I took kids by myself on Sunday.
This, this layout of the store inside is beautiful.
Well, yeah, thank you, yes, yeah, we got to work on the lighting.
Are you done now, or do you have?
No, we still have to work on the lighting, we're waiting for new lighting to come in, and odds and ends, you know, most of my security is up, but a couple of screens don't work, but they do, but I can't, this guy told me what the problem is, he doesn't believe me, so, and we're waiting for another chandelier for the back, so we're going to put one in the back, make it look really classy when he walks in. Another thing is, okay, and I'm going to park way out in the field, you know, because I come in in the morning before everybody else, like 7 o'clock to try to get the heat up, so, to the girls are driving me crazy, during the day, can they park in the meters' spots?
It's free.
Till 6?
Free till 6 o'clock.
Okay, so that's what I'm making sure, because some of them, they don't park closed, but some of them park along the edge, and some of them are, you know, and at night, I would have to walk each one out to the, you know, I would have to walk each one out.
They can park there all day if they want.
Okay, good, and so at 6 o'clock, we close at 6, on most days, is there going to be somebody out there right away?
Oh, you're going to be, have a group of people on out there as soon as 6 o'clock, boom.
I'm trying to get my app going too, my app, I had to figure out my Apple, I had to figure out my Apple ID.
I tried to, Mark, and nobody asked the dude.
Just so you know, Ann spoke to them today, and we're going to be getting, David, we're going to be getting flyers telling you how you can actually put it on, on your computer itself, you don't have to just do it on that, so if you had somebody in the store, and they thought their time was running, you'd be able to enter it.
Yeah.
So, we'll be getting that information for those students, get it to David, to get after the...
Good, good, okay, thank you.
Happy New Year.
And congratulations on your grandchild.
Thank you.
I'll tell you...
Anyone else, sir? Is there a young lady? With the almost gray hair?
I just don't like being called young lady, since I only have, you know, a short period of time in between sessions that I can make 6 o'clock meetings, because those does the work in the city, have a hard time getting out at 6 o'clock.
Put your name and address back in the chart.
The wicked witch of 193 North Ocean Avenue.
How's you doing?
My life's very good, thank you. Not weird. 2008, the village board set up a DRZ to usher in the Tri-Tech project of New Village. I think maybe it's time to go back and revisit that DRZ. Currently, it is my opinion that keeping that DRZ the way it's set up, we're giving any tenants of New Village an unfair advantage, they do not have to come before the ARB, before any of the other village boards for permission, so there are things that possibly the zoning board, the planning board, the ARB might not approve, will get approved, will be allowed to happen, which will give one set of merchants a different set of rules than the other set of merchants, and that just seems to me not fair, so I understand why it was set up, but maybe we don't need it anymore, or we can go back and revisit some of the rules of it.
Okay.
And last but not least, yes, traffic was wonderful, but the tour bus took up how many places in the parking lot?
Can't help it.
I couldn't get my pizza.
I know.
I couldn't get my pizza. It was not pretty in the Kastner household, because I could not go to self-serve pizza.
You apologize.
I think that that's that, the tour bus could park, we could get a limo to come from the outer boroughs into...
I know, I saw it, I saw it.
I mean, in all honesty, there were a lot of people that were not happy about that.
Yeah, we will rethink the tour bus location.
You know, I think they, you know, once again, we'll get a limo, we'll drive back and forth so that we've got a parking situation.
Yeah, we very rarely have tour buses.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever seen it, but it just, it took up a lot of spaces in an evening that, you know, and those are the, those are the quickie spaces, the in-and-out spaces, not the long-term parking spaces, for those of us that want to run somewhere in the village for a meal, you know, just pick up, take out, we're not...
One of the issues is, Mary, is that when tour buses, when the acts get off the stage, they basically go to the tour bus, okay, and they leave, they don't hang around, and with the people leaving the theater and the traffic, to get the tour bus in and out of that area is very difficult, so that's why they need to park it there. We do with the school buses, when the school buses come in, we have them parked someplace else, but I'll mention to the...
We built one of those tunnels like Jones Beach has, so that we can, you know, have the acts go down under the tunnel, get on the bus.
And that was a big bus.
Yeah, that was a very big bus, that took up, that took up nine spaces.
Yeah, I know.
That took up the entire, yeah, sideline, so, and I think that's all the complaints that I have to deal with.
He showed another screen, didn't he?
Yeah, as he did. Mayor, did they keep the crossing guard there?
Um, no, they moved it away because the, we were asked just to have the crossing guard for the period of time when the traffic light wasn't there. They, Suffolk Police made the determination that it was better used to put the crossing guard down at the four corners, and as long as we have the traffic light running, we're in good shape. However, if you do decide to revisit opening up that entrance, that parking garage entrance, that's going to truly affect the children that are crossing there, because we're just beginning to get people to understand that they have to stop at the lights and there's no right on red, it's, you know, it's been a long learning process.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious, thank you. Mr. Bojack?
Good evening, everybody, John Bojack, 89th Street.
Good evening, happy new year.
2015, so here we are, yeah. Just a couple of quick questions, hopefully they'll be quick, starting with, I've heard that the Budweiser Corporation is thinking about forming an amusement park in the village, taking over...
No, no, no.
I'm just, I'm just, that's what I heard.
My understanding is, in the conversations I had, in fact, they got a call from, it was the head of today from AB, they're going to be, not an amusement park, they're going to take their tasting room out of that little spot that they have there, and move it into one of their other buildings, and that's about all, I think, David, they're going to expand a little bit their, their operation, their brewing operation, and, but not to the point, the only thing that will change is where their tasting rooms, and they're going to put them on the buildings across the parking lot.
So we're not going to see giraffes?
No.
They're all ready.
Maybe you promote the monster mode outside, that was an amusement, isn't it, guys?
All right, so that's the extent of the, of the negotiation.
They're toasted log, which is their biggest selling product, is now being brewed out of their Utica plant, and they'll do, basically, their, they have an October Halloween pumpkin beer.
Crafty, crafty stuff.
Blueberry, blueberry, pumpkin, yeah.
That's a...
Like the seasonal stuffs.
Okay. Seasonal stuff.
So, so some, some creatures that they're operating, they're doing something, they're not, they're not the amusement park.
You don't know where that came from.
You never know.
They're doing it in Florida.
What?
They're doing it in Florida.
Yes, they operate at Busch Gardens, so you never know. I want to follow up too on an article from Madison Beach that has some relevance to the Patchogue Village, which is the Dean Hampton's article about the Ethics Board. I'm just a little curious, we obviously have an Ethics Board, are the people who are listed on the website, the current members of the Ethics Board?
There's one person there that, he has not handed in, I estimate, his little resignation about a month ago, he hasn't, his damn release, so that spot is open. We have Rabbi Levinson's wife is on it, and as is Elizabeth Morano, who was a former superintendent of schools for the Tiju Park School District that lives down by the water, those are two, and then we have a third that we've been, we've been seeking somebody out.
Is Elizabeth Morano also the same CDA head?
Yes.
All right, so they don't, they don't have to be independent to serve on the Ethics Board?
Because if there was, if there was a conflict with her, with the CDA, you got to appoint an alternate, I think, to that, but aside from that, no.
Even though the CDA is an agency within the village, it is actually a federal agency.
And it's my understanding, I think, because I filed for, there has not been a meeting of the Ethics Board in 10 years.
Counsel's speak, they meet when...
I wouldn't see a reach yet, there was not a formal complaint, I was in that, probably correct?
So, no, I believe that's what, Pat's here telling me, so, so there's no...
They're based upon if there's an issue.
If there's an issue, because it hasn't been, so it hasn't actively met, since no one's filed an issue, right?
Correct.
Correct?
If you don't, if you don't last campaign, there might have been something, but besides that, I don't think anything.
Okay, and four and five, I just want to clarify something, I sent you an email about the parking hours, park all night means park till 2 a.m., correct? So after 2 a.m., everyone gets ticketed, their cars aren't around, or not? Because the signs say four...
They have to be changed.
They need in the process.
They've been in the process of being changed, that was an error, that was made, and they're changing it to 2 a.m. Well, actually, if you park after 2 o'clock, nobody's going to give you the parking license, you know, because what you don't want to have is somebody saying, I got to move my car, I got a heavy load on, I can't get home, you know?
If I could speak to that just for a second, because it just came up recently.
Oh, okay.
Someone that came for dinner and drinks decided to take a cab home, came back to get the car the next day, they were parked in the, not before 4 a.m. to 9:30, and she was upset that she, and it was given by Suffolk PD, it wasn't even our Patchogue Village.
It must have been inspection or something, right?
No, it was because they were parked in the, before 4, you know, after 4:00, before 9:30 space.
But technically, there is no overnight parking, right, which parking lots, you're not supposed to park.
Except for the railroad.
Except for the railroad, yes.
But park all night is going to be changed to park till 2 a.m. to make it clear to people, not park all night?
Well, the signs don't say all night, I mean, it's, you... Well, the signs don't say all night, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, the sign says 2:00 a.m. nowhere, only in the paper or whatever, it said park all night.
Okay.
So, that's kind of a thing that we use, but if the sign says park till 2:00 a.m., I think that that's.
What time do the clubs close?
4:00.
So, you gotta leave?
Yeah, you're not supposed to park till 4:00.
That sounds like a collision. We're setting ourselves up.
We haven't had any collisions. Hasn't, because we don't aggressively go out there and take out people.
So we don't enforce it?
No. Well, if it needs to be enforced, it's enforced.
We have the eyes of the issue.
So we can't make it to 4:00?
The thing about it is, you don't want somebody getting in their vehicle just because they think they have to move it.
Right.
That they're not in condition to drive, if they say themselves, you know, listen, says, I gotta be out here, I'm gonna get a ticket on their chance.
So wouldn't that be occurring less of it, was it 4:00? The parking was still 4:00?
Yeah, I just, my point is, is I just think that you leave it. We haven't had an issue. Yeah. I mean, it hasn't, there haven't been any issues on it, so.
The signs say 4:00 now.
The signs should meter till 2:00.
Oh.
It's metered till 2:00.
Okay.
The signs say no one should park from 4:00 to 9:00 or 10:00, I think.
Yes, absolutely.
That's that, that's that gap that has.
Yeah, well, when we do that, to help out our businesses, otherwise, employees will be parking there 8:00 in the morning.
Right.
All right, so as a practical matter of, you don't have parking officers going out at 2:05? And lastly, just on subject of clubs, I've been attending meetings of the zoning board, and the Emporium, as probably everyone knows, has a special permit that is being renewed. I've been, I don't know what word to put, but I've been disturbed by the testimony about the number of incidents at the Emporium that seems to be continuing. Incidents of intoxication, assaults. There's a report from John Rockup from the ambulance corps. These incidents are still occurring on a very current basis. I know the village cares about this. And I even know that the owners of the Emporium care about it too. But there seems to be a very high continuing number of incidents, and it's really, it's.
It is, it's a huge concern. The problem that you have, and I, don't say this politely, I say, pre-act that you haven't been in education. In high school, you put 1,500 kids in a box, 10%, idiots, and 5% of them are gonna cause you a problem every single day. You put 1,000 kids in a place like the Emporium, 10% of them are idiots, and 5% of them, 50 of them, you're gonna cause your problem, no matter what you do. And probably in every restaurant, in every place, after about midnight, they're dealing with those 10%. And I don't know how we get, and my point is, John, I don't know how you get around that.
Well, you know, I got some suggestions.
Yeah.
You know, there's reports of people wandering around, I mean, with all the code enforcement officers, police officers, and security officers, how the hell are they wandering around and dropping intoxicated in front of buildings? That's, where are all those people?
Where those people are is, until you do something, until you do something that is flagrant enough for a police officer to stop you, or, in our case, because we don't have any enforcement powers, you do the urinating in public, or you're carrying an open container, is one we can approach. We do on a very regular basis. And one of the things I think has been set up, David, with the restaurant, is that the places call each other now. They have somebody that's leaving, that's obviously intoxicated, obviously going to possibly cause problems, the restaurants call each other, let them know that these people are on the street. And in cases where we get to encounter them, or, we have a radio where we're able to contact the sector cores directly. And we do all those things that you can do, but it's still, it's a.
Well, the owners have met with you, right, recently?
Well, I've met with many, number of times.
Right, but I understand, I don't know, you know, I'm thinking about solutions, one, I wonder about supervision, maybe those cameras too, eventually, there are people running away, hurting people, they're escaping.
And I think that that's, one of the things that Dennis Smith and I were talking about, is where do we place the cameras in that, those lots, in that lot, that you're able to be able to see what happens? In the back lot, possibly, we need to put one in someplace on Road Avenue itself.
Okay.
But your point's very well taken. I don't, I don't, I don't play it down by the comment that I made, but I, it just, it's that factor of that many people in a box.
Right, well, you know, it's not a church, you know, it's not a church, so you're gonna have probably, I don't know, it's got the biggest venue in the village, just 1,500 people, there's a lot, maybe 200,000 people go there. You're gonna have issues.
But you know what's interesting the other night, is it, just in terms of Main Street itself, the day of the base, it was 1,200. The Emporium had something, had between 800 and 1,000. The 89 North had a Nolan Brothers Tribute Theater. They had about 450 people. And then, all the restaurants at the same time, and all the places on Main Street, had very active, big crowds, and I spoke to Jimmy this morning, he said there were some things that happened. But given the impact, the amount of people that were on Main Street that night, you know, Saturday night, it was reasonably calm, Jimmy said, no windows broken.
Yeah.
You know, no fights out on the street that, or, the crowds really melded together very well. And I think that that's, I think that's what you're talking about, is how do we get to that point that we don't be so concerned about these things?
That's my only point, but my point about it is, if there's something there that's happening that hasn't been totally addressed, I'm just shocked by the numbers, they're very high.
Oh, they are, they are, and they disturb me much as they disturb you. But I tell you, I've been around too long, I've seen it too often. In that box, 10% are idiots, and 5%, Josephine, am I wrong with that? You were in the business, you know, 50%, 5%, 5% of that final 10%, you're gonna wrestle with it.
Okay, well, anyway, that's one I wanted to share, but thank you.
Can I just make a comment, Mr. Bojack? You got a very bright light on further back camera, it's like very distracting.
Okay.
So maybe, I don't know what it's for.
I don't know either, it's a new camera.
But if you could just like put something over it next time?
It won't be on next time, the light will not be on. It's the light shining on over.
It's small, but it is distracting.
Any other comments in the public?
I see, yes, sir. But right, seeing from your faces, I always figure they're here to say hello.
Joe Francy's wanting to go to Oak Street? I was here a couple of months back, and I threw out some issues about speeding and crimes, all sorts of fun stuff happening down Oak Street, so, wanted to reiterate, I emailed you a while back, and trusted for, I think, last week.
Yep, we talked.
Oh, you did?
One of the, one of the things, I got an email today. We have a Department of Transportation, in fact, it was under Congressman Bishop, they have a million four, and part of that money is going to be to totally redo Oak Street, the sidewalks, lighting, and do some traffic calming, because some of the issues that we talk about here, in terms of speed, we have to come up with some ways to slow it down. And I think some of it is, if we can take, if we can put new street lighting, really lighten it up, and depending upon how much, my thought is to put the period lighting that we have on OSHA Avenue, to do the same thing on Oak Street, and I think that that will help it out quite a bit. And one of the other things that happens when you do that lighting, is it almost visually narrows the street, so we'll hopefully slow it down also. You get that feeling on OSHA Avenue, when you go down, with the lighting, it doesn't narrow it. So, it hasn't gone up, we're waiting now for the final approval from the New York State DOT, the NIMTEC, they have to approve it, and we're gonna tear the whole thing up and start all over again.
Excellent.
Okay.
Okay. Is this in time?
Yes.
Do you think we could get, because I don't think it would cost much, a stop sign at the corner of Wood and Oak? Because, you know, it seems simple enough, it would really get people slowing, because it's bad. I have, I have pictures on my phone, came home one night from a coffee house out in Nassau, and our friend Mini Cooper was on a sidewalk.
Wow.
I said, what did you do, parking your car on the sidewalk? Well, long story short, it got hit hard. That's hard enough to put a Mini Cooper on sidewalk. So, you know, that's what we're doing, but my home is right, basically, at the corner of Maple and Oak, in between Maple and Wood, so it's, we're, I think I'm the worst spot possible.
On the south side or the north side?
I'm on the south side.
Well, one of the concerns, after the traffic, because you got the bend there.
Right.
You come around a bit, I did take a look at where Wood stands within that, because what you don't wanna do is have it be a blind stop sign when somebody's coming around, this guy's sitting here on Wood thinking you're gonna stop, and you don't, because you don't, you know, catch it up usually quickly. Let's take a look at it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, great, and also, if you get, I had spoken to somebody called safety at one point, there's been some petty thefts, somebody opened, opened the hood of my Hulk's wedding at the time, took an intake boot right out of my car while I was asleep. Yeah, you can't pick it up, you know, and how they did that, my bedroom's closest to the street,